I now call the meeting of the West Coast Court Call Room.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Proton Marshburn.
Present.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Johns.
Present.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
I would now call on Councilmember Gray Sampson. Ladies and the ladies and gentlemen, follow the invocation. Please.
Flag your allegiance. The United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Please join me in the invocation. Thank you for the opportunity to gather here tonight to talk about our town, our community. Follow, we want to lift up those who have been devastated by the impacts of Hurricane Florence last week, impacts that will be felt for months and months and years in some cases. As you do these people in eastern, southern, southeastern part of our state, northeastern part of South Carolina, and others who have been affected by this storm even in the western part of our state. Be with those EMS, those fire, those police, those rescue workers out there trying to help these folks. As it should be with this council tonight, with the staff and members of our communities who discuss these important issues. Also follow our special prayer for those who are serving in our military bases and installations in this country and around the world, protecting the freedoms of our country and the countries in which they serve. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Next on the agenda, petitions and comments. Set us time on the agenda if you wish to address the council. Or if not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and address. The chairman will move forward. Talk to them on the agenda.
So Lou.
Senator.
Motion, Senator, all in favor but not in line.
Aye.
All opposed. Matthew Poole. Have presentation for her. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. How are you, sir?
Good, good.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me here tonight. The report that we're going to overview is a benchmarking analysis of the Garner Fire Rescue. The handout I passed around is an executive summary of a study that was completed by a third-party consultant several months ago. And so some of the material is covered in our PowerPoint presentation and then some of it, obviously, we couldn't cover in a presentation such as this. So as I go through our PowerPoint, if you've got questions about anything regarding the information there or the executive summary, please let me know. The complete study is around 100 pages. I'll be glad to email that to anyone that wants a copy of that. So the study, we're going to discuss a little bit of background information about the report. What happened, the Garner Fire Rescue was asked to participate in a benchmarking analysis of the Harrisburg Fire Department. So Harrisburg is located in between Concord and Charlotte, North Carolina. It's a community somewhat similar to us in size and several other factors. Their town government had requested a consulting firm provide a analysis of their fire department. They were addressing several issues regarding the operations of that department. I was contacted by the consultant doing the study and asked if Garner would participate in the analysis of the Harrisburg Fire Department. So we graciously accepted the offer. There were 14 departments that participated in the analysis. Apex, Burlington, Carboro, Chapel Hill, Clayton, Davidson, Gastonia, Harrisburg, Hendersonville, Hickory, Salisbury, Stakesville, Shelby, and Mooresville. So if you're wondering why those departments were chosen, the consultant had looked at various factors regarding the fire departments. They wanted to compare Harrisburg to light categories. So comparative in size, call volume, population, those parameters that kind of deem fire department response. So these departments, along with us, were considered to be participants in part of the study. So what we did, the third-party consultant requested a plethora of information about our organization. So in a lot of fire studies, you really, you look at call volume and response time. This was a much more intricate study, so this looked at every facet of a fire department from call processing time, fire loss value, a wide range of information. It took us right at 90 days to complete the information to send for the analysis. So once the analysis was completed, the consultant asked if I would attend a peer review of the Harrisburg Fire Department. So myself and the 14 other fire chiefs attended a review where we reviewed the information of Harrisburg in their study and then, you know, tried to provide feedback as to possible improvements of the organization. What I found beneficial was, all 14, like departments, suffer some of the same problems and issues that we suffer. So as much as I hope Harrisburg got out of the study, Garner did as well. So once the study and the development of this process was complete, the consultant submitted the final report to all 14 chiefs just for informative purposes. And once I saw the report, I thought it would be prudent to try to get the consultant to apply the data to Garner. So how, so where Harrisburg was compared, how would Garner compare with the data since he already had captured the information? So for a very inexpensive amount, the consultant took the existing data that he had and put a benchmarking analysis for us. So none of the information was altered. All we asked was rather than comparing Harrisburg, compare Garner. And so we completed that report, presented it to our board of directors, then we presented it to the MOU committee, which in turn had requested that we present a summary of the report to you tonight. So, and the study was provided by a third-party consulting firm, North Carolina Fire Rescue Initiative Solutions. So it was done by a complete third-party that we had no involvement with, with the compilation of the information. So a couple of things that we wanted to go over with you tonight, where we ranked, and some of it is in your executive summary, is where we ranked the very highest out of the 14 departments or higher than most. And then we'd like to talk about some areas where we ranked lowest or lower than most, and then look at a few graphs. So as I'm explaining this, if you've got any questions, please, please feel free to ask. So a couple of areas where we were highest, so out of the 14 departments, we ranked the very highest, there were three categories that we've got noted in this presentation. So the number one, where we were highest in all of the departments were in actual fires based on 1,000 people in their district. So what that says is for every 1,000 people, there's a percentage of fires that we have. We had the highest amount of fires regarding any other department. So when, in the past, when we've stressed our call volume and our, the amount of emergency incidents that we have, fires is a large volume. Where in some other agencies, medical calls may take a higher percent of population of the calls rather than what we have. So we're around 63% of medical calls, and where we found in these other departments, they may be around 80%. So we had the highest actual fires per 1,000 population of any other department. We had the highest ranking of fires as a percent of all responses. So when you look at the total amount of responses, you're looking at wrecks, medical calls, hazardous incidents, fire alarm activations, and then fires. They rank those in a percentage, so how many, what percentage of the calls were fires, what were medical. And we actually, our fires as a percent of our total response was the highest out of the group as well. And then the third highest that we wanted to note tonight was our square miles of service area. So if you look, in every fire district, there's a certain amount of square mileage, that's a rule of thumb, we'll discuss it in just a little bit. So if you look at our service area, we have 84 square miles. We have the largest district of any of the 14 departments. So when you're talking about the city limits of Garner and our unincorporated area, it is the largest fire district of any one that was compared. So we're trying to, you know, wrap our minds around the size of our district and how we compare. We were the largest in district size. We also were the largest, or higher than most, so not the highest, but higher than most in square miles and population per fire station. So where we have four existing fire stations, those districts are very large and are very dense in population in comparison to the other departments that we noted, that were noted in the study. So it's not the highest, but it is higher than most in square miles and population per fire station. The average number of incidents per fire station was higher than most. And so there's a rule of thumb in the fire service that around 500 calls of service would deem the need of a fire station when you're looking at responses. So 500 calls, if you look at a Raleigh substation, potentially is around 500 calls a year. Most of our stations are at 1,000 to 1,500. Our slowest station, I think, was around 780 calls last year. So when you look at how many calls each station runs, we were higher than most in the amount of average number of incidents per fire station.
Matt?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you very quickly, and I've seen this, I should have asked you. When it says the average number of incidents, this information comes from the various fire departments, and I guess they all, you have a definition and everybody is talking off the same page. In other words, an incident is an incident, it's not, you wouldn't call it an incident, somebody else might call it something else.
Right. Yes, sir. So this data was, it was scrubbed in comparison. So in previous historical years, where, let's say, we receive a structure fire and four of our units respond, there are some departments that would count that as four incidents. We only count it as one because we were dispatched to respond to that call. So over the last few years, most fire departments have gone to that common standard. So I feel confident that we were comparing, the consultants comparing apples to apples in the study.
Thank you.
And then this, and this, for me, what was very interesting in the report was we were higher than most as a percentage of our population age 0 to 17. So when, you know, I've spent my entire life in Garner, I look at Garner as typically being an older community, but with our increase of schools that we've seen populate, we actually have a higher-than-most percentage of population 0 to 17. That was an interesting fact that, I'll just, I'll be honest, I learned out of the outcome of this study. So inversely, I've got one slide that talks about where we were lower or lowest than most. So one thing, and so high is not necessarily good or bad, and low is not necessarily bad or good. I am proud of this, lower-than-most of this slide. So when, we're talking about fire costs per capita, so we had one of the lowest fire costs for our citizens per capita of any other department. It wasn't the lowest, but it was lower than most. And I think there's a slide later that puts it in an illustration. But we, so compared to the other departments, we provide a very high level of service at a very inexpensive price. Our operating cost as a percent of total budget was lower than most. So when we look at our capital, personnel side, and then our operating side of the budget, our operating budget was lower than most, which I'm proud because I believe that we are physically conservative in how we operate our fire department. So that was, to me, that's, it may be low, but that is a positive low. We also had a lower-than-most number of fire service personnel per 10,000 population. So that, what that is, is there's a certain amount of number of firefighters per population, and we were lower than most when it came to the staffing. I will, however, lay a disclaimer that this study was performed while the nine firefighters that the town has provided were in the fire academy. So those nine, in the updated study, should reflect those numbers. I just want to make sure that we clarify, yes, we have a low number of people per 10,000, but also we have added nine new firefighters since this data was collected. Another lower-than-most is our average turnout time. So turnout time, what that is, is when you dial 911 and the dispatch center notifies the fire station, that a clock starts. So the bell at the fire station alarms, the buzzer goes off, and then they get en route or they get on the truck, fully dressed, and mark en route. So that time that we receive the call to the time that we mark en route is called turnout time. That is a controllable time by our organization. Our turnout time was lower than most based on a comparison of the departments. So I'm proud of that fact that says that we are assembling in a timely manner when it comes to responding to the calls. There are some things, some timeframes that we can't control. So travel time, so from the time that we mark en route to the time we arrive on scene, it's hard for us to cut corners because we don't want our firefighters to speed or break traffic laws. So it's the distance from the fire station to the call is what is problematic for us. Community fire stations per 10,000 population. So it looks at our total population and amount of fire stations that we should have and compares us. We are lower than most when it comes to the amount of fire stations we have based on our population. And the last, and this was the other interesting fact about our census, is that our percent of population 65 and older is actually lower than most. I was under the impression that it would, it would look, it would look higher than most. But based on the information in comparing these other communities, our population 65 and older is actually, was on the lower end in comparison. So now I've got just a couple of graphs. The town manager and assistant town manager, we met together and wanted to pull, so there were almost 70 comparisons, and we wanted to pull just a few to where we would talk about some various topics of the fire service and for our department. So where we were talking about our call volume, so I want to talk just a minute on the amount of calls that we have. When you look at these other departments, we are a busy department, but total incidents based on our population, we're actually middle of the road. So we weren't an outlier in being too busy or not busy enough. So Garner is depicted in red in the bar graph, and we're somewhere towards the middle of the road of total responses based on per 1,000 people in our community. But inversely, if you break the responses down and look at fires itself, we were the highest. So actual fires based on 1,000 people, we have more fires than anybody. So as the fire chief, is that concerning? It absolutely is because we want to concentrate more on fire prevention education. We want to, we want to look at why do we have more fires than other communities? What are the reasons that determine that? And how can we prevent that? How can we lower that number down? Because fire prevention is very important in the fire service. But when you look at fires, we are a busy department. The next is wages, salaries per FTE. So the town graciously did a pay study three years ago, and we caught up with where we need to be with our pay. And what this does, this depicts that, so we are in the middle range of our page when you compare wages and salaries per FTE. So that's, we're not an outlier in that area, we are in line with the other departments. But this was, the one item that we noted in our bullet list is that fire service cost per capita. When you look at the amount of people we serve and our operating budget, we are one of, and the amount of calls we run, we are the second to the lowest in fire service cost of anybody that was documented. So I think that the town and the fire department can be proud of that. So let's look at population when you're talking about our district. So with the town of Garner and our unincorporated area, we're around 60,000 people. So that puts us third highest based on service population of any of the groups that were captured in the study. So we are somewhat of an outlier with the amount of people we serve. And the square miles of service area, so we are the highest in the amount of service area that we, with the district that we cover, right at 80 square miles. And then fire service total personnel per 10,000. So if we were, if we take our 10,000 population and determine the fire service personnel, so our operations, our personnel side, is somewhat on the lower end. However, those nine firefighter, firefighters were not captured in this study. So that number would put us somewhere around the lower to middle area of where we are relative to personnel per 10,000. Community fire stations per 10,000, so we're looking at how many people are in our district versus how many fire stations we have. So generally, a rule of thumb is around 10,000 people. 500 calls determines the need of a fire station, in layman's terms. So we are relatively, as we have been addressing the need for our fifth fire station around the 401 corridor, this just kind of puts it into perspective as how many stations our department should have if you base it on population, square miles, and service demand. So we were, we are on the low end in compared to the other departments as the amount of fire stations that we have based on our population. So that concludes the summary of our executive report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you've got.
Questions?
What did you draw out of the whole, if you had to wrap it up and make your summary conclusion, how would you do that, Matt?
So the areas of focus that I found interesting, for one, is the census population, where we, we feel like we've got a fairly older community. And I think we, we feel that way due to the amount of convalescent homes that we respond to a medical call, so it's relative to our responses. But to identify that we have a 0 to 17 age group, a large school system in our area, that to, in order to get those fire calls down, we have to educate at a younger age. You know, typically, a third or fourth grader is at the age where they, they learn and have the ability to retain. So you can go teach a kindergarten or something, but they don't retain the information. Psychologically, a third or fourth grader, if you can key in during that timeframe, they will retain fire safety tips. So I think increasing our fire prevention is something that we need to do. We are reactive when it comes to fire prevention. So if a school or civic group calls and wants us to go, we go. We go and we'll do anything you want, but we're, we need to be, increase our proactivity in the community about fire prevention based on the age. It's solidified, I know we're a busy department, I know we have a lot of fires. Our reputation in Garner is aggressive firefighting tactics, and that, it's based on experience because of the amount of fires that our firefighters see, their experience in what they do. So that was justification on why I think we have a great aggressive staff. The size of our community has been a concern of ours, especially with the internal growth. So the amount of stations that we have and personnel and how we keep up is a concern. And I'll tell you where we have to get better. So Mr. Kennedy, in the data analysis, we have not done a good job in the last several years of capturing our fire loss information. So when we go to a fire, and when I became the chief, I made this decision. It was not, I didn't feel like it was our job to determine how much damage your house occurred. I felt like that's an insurance adjustments. You know, we didn't, we don't have that kind of educational background to determine you received $30,000 worth of damage. So we stopped the monetary amount. But where I found is where we need to improve is a percentage amount. So we can determine what percentage of your home is damaged, and we can determine your fire loss value based on percentage. So it was a learning factor for me to start recapturing fire laws, but not in a monetary amount, but in a percentage amount. So that was an improvement that I gained by participating in this study. So as we're going through accreditation, our fire loss information will be a lot more valid than what it's been over the last few years.
Overall, they, from a financial point of view, and a lot of folks will just look at it that way, we're in, you're in very good, very good company and mostly near the top of the heap in efficiency of the use of dollars. The place that it's, that you're working on, that comes up, where we're, where we need the improvement is, we need, which we're working on, is additional, additional fire station. So to me, it was information that public could really understand the charts, I mean, the bar graphs, that was, that's a telling story. And I'm glad you, glad you had it done for that nominal amount, which will go unnamed, not to embarrass the fellow putting it together, but not the town, but being willing to share it with the public is good. This speaks highly of your leadership and your firefighters and your board.
Matt, I do have one question. I don't remember who we discussed it when we were talking about with the MOU committee. Of these comparative, comparative other fire towns, do you know what percentage of those have what we would call a municipal fire department that's funded strictly by the municipality? Or there any other examples out there of ours where we're, we're mixed between county and town?
We, so there are, there were a few. Mr. Marshburn, I can't speak to be exact on this, but for the most part, when you're looking at these 14 departments, they are municipal departments. So us being a nonprofit, we were an outlier in that. But as far as who contracts with an unincorporated area, I don't know. We, that, when, our information did not capture what was in the county and what was in the town. It was a capture of our fire department. So we look at, so Davidson, I'm not that familiar if Davidson contracts an unincorporated or is purely, if that makes sense. But the majority of these departments are municipal in nature. Some, I'm almost certain some of them contract with unincorporated areas, but I'm not, I can't vouch for which one does or does not.
I'm gonna start with Gray and go this way. Anything.
Good information, Matt. Thanks for the presentation. Kennedy's right, the graphs are good information, the public can see, watching the meeting. And I think it speaks to an issue that's been brought up, and that's, you know, getting out of the station, give your additional personnel to address some of the growth. And that's kind of, that's here, and then at your station, if, whenever Station 5 is designed and built and staffed, and I guess you'll be looking at Station 6, but anyway, that's another story down the road. But it's good information, and I appreciate you getting it to us.
Yes, sir. So in our long-range plan, we looked at, you know, two, there are two long-range goals of our department is the development of Station 5 and the potential relocation of Station 2. And that's something that we were looking at. So that, that building is a 1976 Butler Building, but it's staffed with an ambulance and engine. It was never really designed to do that, so with 540 So with 540 going through the growth of the town somewhere along, and I use Ken's Produce as a, as a target area where it would meet the need of our unincorporated and municipal area. So the relocation of that is a long-term, you know, I would say Station 6, but we're, we're looking at relocating too. But our Station 5 is the immediate need, absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, appreciate the service that you ran into us and the report that you've given to us this evening. We're looking forward to another station, but by the time you build that stage, you'll be ready for another with the population growth. But I think we can take care of it.
Thank you, sir.
Kathy.
Yes, Matt, will this report be available to the public?
Absolutely.
Okay. And where would they need to go to see that?
Um, we could, I guess we could post it, or upon request, we could make it available on our website.
I think that would be good.
That would be fine. We could, we could report an executive summary or capture the information here tonight and be glad to do that.
I think that would be an important thing to do for the public, to be able to, to have easy access to it. And I would just like to say that, you know, our reputation as a town has been pretty much that we are very busy doing our work. We're not, don't spend a lot of time boasting about it, but we, we're very busy doing our work and doing it well. And this report is just another indication of the overall spirit in the town of Garner. It's good to have these numbers. It's good to understand the comparisons so that we are aware of what we have and appreciate what we have. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I would echo, echo some of the comments by my fellow council members. We appreciate the effort that went into that and the chance you had, the opportunity you had to participate in this. I'm, I'm looking at the first sentence in the executive summary, which says in part that our department is experiencing population growth which presents increasing complexities in providing core local government functions such as fire and rescue. Obviously, you know and we all know, we're not that far from the 2020 census. So I'd be curious to know when we count all of our folks, some of these towns that I see up here that I have always assumed were larger population-wise than the, than the town of Garner, may not be. My wife is from Salisbury. I always thought Salisbury was a, was a larger town than Garner, but it's a little more spread out, I think. But at any rate, that census will, will give us new information, and there's a good chance that population-wise, we may jump ahead of these others. And I guess the final thing I would say is, I'm thankful that this calamity that we've all experienced, at least here in Garner, I'm assuming your department wasn't as busy as it could have been or is in a lot of areas in eastern North Carolina. And for that, we can be thankful.
Yes, sir. As far as Hurricane Florence, we, we were not as busy as we've been in the past hurricanes. We, we, our area is very fortunate. We, we worked, I think we had our first ever Town of Garner EOC, Joint EOC, that worked flawlessly over the weekend. And we, I think we all learned a lot from it, but from an emergency response standpoint, we were very lucky in our area.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Matt, do you have many people to come in and apply for application that want to join the fire department now?
Uh, yes, sir. I mean, our department for firefighters, so our pay is comparable, our call volume is high, and the amount of fires we have is high. So if you're a firefighter, that's typically what you're looking for. You know, we're not a large department like Raleigh or Cary, but we are a large to medium-sized department, and we're the busiest department other than Raleigh, Cary, and Wake County. So I, I think we're a good place. We've got, you know, comparable benefits, and, and they're busy. So I think our applicant pool is, fits the needs of our community.
Appreciate what you do for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, this is not a public hearing, but if anyone would like to speak, come to the podium. Thank you, Matt. Good job, Matt.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Move approval of consent agenda.
Stand.
Motion made, second amendment, favor, I say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. No public hearings. Under new and old business, we have the Avosboro Roadline. I'm John Hightes.
Mayor members of council, Joey Hopkins from DOT was here recently, as you remember, giving an update. And after that meeting, he asked a question of staff that he wanted us to, to pass on to the council. So we're bringing that question to you tonight. DOT is getting ready to resurface Avosboro Road from 7th Avenue down to Timber Drive. And DOT asked if when that was done, we would like for them to stripe that road instead of the four lanes as it is currently, to stripe it with two lanes with a turn lane in the middle. Doing that would look something a little bit like the diagram that is in your packet and that is on the screen, but it would not include planted medians that is in this diagram. It would leave areas on the, the margins here, on the sides. It would leave a little extra asphalt that could be, that would have a solid line delineating it that could be used by bicyclists, but we would not recommend painting them for bikes because we don't have a continuous bike network around town. But the lane width would be there. So you can see here, there's a biker in it. There's a bike painted in this diagram, so we wanted to X those out tonight just to make sure we didn't have any confusion. DOT is asking us this question because the, the traffic along that section of Avosboro Road is within the parameters of what you would typically use, a three-lane section, two lanes with a, a turn lane, four. Average daily trips on that section are between 8,600 trips and 10,000 trips per day. That, the proposed striping of three lanes is designed to handle between 15,000 and 18,000 trips per day. The configuration that we have on the road now is a configuration that you would see typically more for a 35,000 trips-per-day type roadway. DOT did give us some traffic statistics or accidents statistics on this section for the five-year period from July 13, of 2013 to June of 2018. There were 54 crashes. We are pleased to say that none of those involved injuries. They were, they were property challenges only or property issues only. Typically, making a change like this, we reduce traffic incidences by about 25 percent, so 15 to 16 of those crashes could be potentially reduced. When they look at the crashes on these, these, of these 54, what are the ones that could likely be attributed to the way the lanes are striped currently, meaning rear ends on the inside left? So if you're in the left lane, stopped to turn, to make a left turn, and someone were to rear-end you, or a side swipe because of the two lanes moving, or a bicyclist, which one of our accidents was a, a non-personal injury bicycle accident. When you look at those, those account for about 13 of the type of accidents. So the number of accidents that we had that can be attributed to this type of facility are in line with the type numbers that they believe could be eliminated with the painting that they were recommending. Staff does notes that this is a common practice. We did propose this along with our consultants in the transportation plan as a possible configuration for this and other streets. You may recall that, that we went further than that with the section of Avosboro, that we talked about having a complete streets model that went much further into planted medians, which this proposal does not include. So we do just want to make sure that, that you understand this is not, staff recommended an implementation, something specifically from our transportation plan, but we do acknowledge that it is in line and in keeping with what staff and the consultants believe would be appropriate for roads like Avosboro in this section. Staff does think that, that because the volume numbers do align with what is typical, that this could work this, on this section. And staff does not have any issues, foresee any issues should council choose to implement the, the striping that is proposed. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
John, I think you've alluded to it. This is, this is mentioned, well, in the Garner Forward Transportation Plan, this council had a chance to approve. I note with some interest that as it's talking about this section, it says Avosboro Road benefits from an interested and engaged community that is supportive of transforming the road into a great multimodal street. Is that, that terminology, I guess, talks about a, a street of this type, even though that would perhaps go beyond just, just the striping, but the, the planted medians and those kinds of things?
Yes, sir. I think, I think what you're referencing is in keeping with what's being proposed, but it is going further than, than we're talking about with this. This would just be a striping, painting, striping treatment and would not impose some of the other, the other complete street type implementations at this time.
Is there any information that would indicate that if we, if we restripped it and had two lanes and then a turning lane, if that would have any negative impact on traffic flow along that corridor there?
DOT has told us that because the, the numbers that I mentioned previously, the three-lane striping would handle more traffic, is typically handles more traffic than we're currently seeing and would see in the foreseeable future on Avosboro, that in very general terms, there would not be an overall negative impact.
One other question I have, and I'll defer to my other council members. The intersection of Avosboro and Timber, that is there now, where the configuration is a turn lane left, a straight-ahead lane, and then I believe a turn lane right. Would, would, would that type of configuration stay in place at that intersection under this plan? Do you know?
My understanding is something similar to that would stay, and that there'd be a tapering of the lanes to expand out a short distance from the intersection to allow for the traffic to increase and go into the different directions at the intersection.
I'll defer to others and be happy to...
John, I just want to see if I heard you right. You said that the numbers show that restripping it and making it three lanes would handle more traffic than the four lanes we have now?
No, ma'am. The, the four-lane striping now is typically used on a street that handles much more traffic than we currently have. If you go down to the three-lane striping, it is, it would typically handle 15,000 to 18,000 trips per day. Where currently experienced is only 8,000 to 10,000 per day. Did that answer your question?
Well, yes. I must have misunderstood you. I, I have a little bit of concern, though, about that because if, as we grow and the number of trips per day grow, how long will it be before the three-lane model isn't handling the traffic?
And I don't, I don't have any projections for what that would be. One, one of the things that DOT said to us was that this is striping only, we're not changing the width of the pavement. So this could be converted to another striping mechanism or another striping configuration in the future.
If that would be a little bit more problematic, would it not if we had the medians in there? Am I reading that wrong, too?
We are not proposing any medians at this time. We're just using, the only graphic, the graphic we had most available to show you what this would look like is the one from the transportation plan that included a median. So that's why we're showing that with an X across it, trying to, trying to make the point of, the section would look like it does just beyond that, two travel lanes, a turn lane. We're not, DOT nor the town staff are proposing the implementation of any medians at this time.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. I have, I've got numerous concerns about this. One is, well, there's several, I'll start. This is not a controlled-access strip, and it's also, there are traffic lights. So in my eyes, we're eliminating the turn lane. I mean, you have a turn lane now, right turn lane and a left turn lane. We have from Avosboro to Timber, north to here to Town Hall, there are 39 total driveways, 27 into offices, businesses, churches, that go to apartments, 12 into single-family homes. And there are 37 that go south from here, 23 into offices, businesses, townhomes, 14 into single-family homes. So they're all driveways. You know, this concept has the left turn lane, but it doesn't have the right turn lane. And the right turn lane is just as important. I don't think we have any stats showing more people turn left or more people turn right. I'm sure they hadn't, hadn't determined where they turn in, which way they turn, depending on where you're going. But one of the concerns I have is that we're, we're going against our own standards, and that is having right turn lanes. And I base it on the fact that for one, there's a right turn lane sitting out here in front of Town Hall that we added. There are two right turn lanes that were added at the Y. There's a turn lane at the Faith Community Church and a turn lane at Walgreens. Now, those sections were just two-lane, but you had to add the turn lane. Here, we're asked, we're being told basically to add the turn lane out, but there's three lanes. But Ms. Barringer mentioned about growth. We know that Highway 70 is going to be expanded to six lanes, three lanes on each side sometime in the future, not the near future, but in the future. It's already been discussed. So we're going to add lanes of traffic on a major highway, and then when people turn off that highway, we're going to narrow the traffic back down. So in my eyes, we're going against our standards because we made other people turning right turn lanes so it wouldn't impede traffic. But this would impede traffic because people turn right. You got school buses. You got the school in the morning, and we all know if you travel in the morning, I travel every day numerous times, the traffic. Heck, even at all that we did to try to get the Avosboro Elementary School, the carpool line extended, they still, when they pick up in the afternoon, the carpool line extends on the Avosboro Road. Avosboro Road has been like that as long as I can remember. So some of the businesses were developed there long before the town had certain standards. And some of the businesses, they use Avosboro Road to unload trucks for deliveries at the, at the, one of the daycare centers, at the convenience store, some people at Avosboro Road, at Avosboro Square, because the parking was, the parking wasn't sufficient enough to allow some of those trucks and vehicles in there to unload some of these tractor-traders. So it's a, a concern. Plus, you got bus stops there, Avosboro Road. So you're going to have buses stopping, and of course, that's common in some of these streets. What concerns me is, is again, these right turns. I mean, when you turn onto Heather Park, Heather Park Apartments has got 200 units. Penity Grove has got 60 or so units, and they can build a phase two. The Sibley Bluffs has 35 to 40 townhomes, and they can double that, that amount. And the Landings at Heather Park Town Homes is about 100. All that, right turn and left turns. And so you're eliminating that right, that right turn. That right turn, and again, we don't have limited access. It's something like Timber Drive, we all go to one, one driveway to turn in to go to numerous businesses. These are, because of being built so many years ago, we have individual residents. And you say, well, you got individual residents on Timber Drive. That's true. But you also have the right turn lane to act, the right lane to act as your turn lane. And you have a through lane and a left turn lane. We're not going to add lanes, certainly. So it's concerning is that we're basically taking the turn, we're being asked to take the right turn lane away, which again, I see that violates our own standards, making people put the right turn. Why do we put two right turn lanes at the Y if we don't need a right turn lane? We don't need one, then why do we put one in front of Town Hall? If you need a turn lane, you need a turn lane, and the right lane serves as that. John mentioned there were 54 accidents over five years, and that's less than one a month. None were serious. I drive it, and somebody said, well, do you have rear-end collisions? And when we did the traffic, traffic study, one of the consultants asked me, I said, no, I drive it all the time, you rarely see collisions. I said, uh, I said, you see people going too fast. I had somebody zip by me last week, I don't know how fast they were going, but they were exceeding the speed limit, because I was going 40, and they were going way a lot faster than I was, and I was exceeding the speed limit. I'm concerned, if you look at this and you don't put any striping on there, that when a person gets by the slow traffic turning right, they're going to drive even faster because they're going to have a wider lane. I think it's pretty much proved, if you got wider lanes, people will drive faster. You don't have the, the stripe to try to keep you in any lane. You have a wider lane. So that's, that's a big concern. I just, again, I've lived here 40 years, the concept's worked for all the, I think there's more than that, but I've, I can remember for 40 years or more, driven on it for, well, 40 years. So, I don't remember how old I am. So I drove my bike on it. And on Sunday, a gentleman was riding his bike, you know, he has one lane, I passed him completely into the lane. I didn't get close to him, I passed him in the lane. I, I think bike lanes are much safer being as wide as a car lane, not as a bike lane, but that's another story. I just think that we're going backwards here and against our own standards. And again, we know that 70 is going to be wide one day to three lanes, why don't we narrow one of the roads off of it from four lanes down to three, or two through lanes, or from two through lanes to one through lane each of the traffic? I believe you're just sitting here asking for higher speeds, and I know stats say it may make it safer. I disagree with that because of the number of right turns. There's a lot of residents. You know, if you turn down Pool Drive and you go down toward the Sevignan Club to Buckingham, past the townhomes, you know, back in that section right there, there's 100 single-family homes or townhomes, just in that one section, just that area. And including Rust of Heather Hills, Oregon, all these apartments and the townhomes, Georgetown Manor and River Birch and the offices and so forth and so on. I know what it's like to try to get in and out of there sometimes. Sometimes it's challenging, sometimes you go out there and there's not a car ramp, just like all of Avosboro Road is that way. So I just, hey, it's worked. Why do we need to change it? It works. Nobody's coming here calling and complaining about changing the striping on the road. I know they'd like to get the pothole fixed, which is going to happen. I've heard more complaints about that than anything. I know that's coming up. But I, I think it works. It has worked. Even be, the, the great street concept can work in some areas. You know, as, as we talked about when we adopted the plan, of course, I loaded it into the plan, you know, Hillsborough Street works good, and it's... I know they'd like to get the pothole fixed, which is going to happen. I've heard more complaints about that than anything. I know that's coming up. But, I think it works, it has worked. Even be, the great street concept can work in some areas, you know, as we talked about when we adopted the plan, of course, I learned it against the plan. You know, Hillsborough Street works good in some ways because it's a very heavy travel pedestrians, but the bicycle part doesn't work because it made it more dangerous. So, it's a concept that has pluses and minuses to it. Again, this has worked for years. I don't, I still want to understand why we need to consider going against our own standards and taking out the right turn lane which currently exists.
Mr. Singleton, just one point of clarification. The lane, the stripe would be there to delineate the lane width, the bike would just not be painted on it. So, I just want to make sure I said that earlier, that it wouldn't end up with a wider lane, it would end up with a standard-sized lane, the extra pavement would look like both edges here, just without the bike emblem on it.
But, there'd be extra pavement there, when there's a bike on there, there would be extra pavement there. That's my whole point, is that people will drive faster if they're given the opportunity.
Okay, so on the agenda for input, aren't we, do we need to consider any changes he's suggested?
I didn't suggest any changes, I suggested leaving it like it was.
Okay, whatever.
One more question. Was there a public input process about this, about this proposal?
Not, not the specific proposal, there was a ton of public input in the transportation plan. This is just something DOT recommends because anytime they're resurfacing a road that is not currently striped, the configuration that they would do it if it were new today, they're going to recommend it. So, this is just a recommendation, has, has no bearing on the fact that we recently did a transportation plan that happened to, to show something like this. This is just the same type of thing that DOT might come and ask us tomorrow about another road in town, should they be resurfacing it with a configuration that's different than they would build new.
So, you don't have any numbers on any public opinion about this, or folks that live along there or have businesses along there?
No ma'am, we're just bringing you a question. DOT is going to start doing work on the road any day, and this is, DOT just wanted you to have the opportunity to change it, should you choose to. We would just need to let them know, you know, after tonight, what the pleasure of the council is so that they can start work on the resurfacing. As Mr. Singleton said, the important part, I think the most important part is getting the resurfacing done, and we certainly don't hold that up. I don't think any of us wants to hold that up.
Hey Buck?
Thank you, Mayor. While I think it, it might look good on paper, might sound good, it could also be a part of a trend, perhaps even a fad. I've seen it done elsewhere. The complete nine yards with removing the Xs on there and it had medians, trees on both sides slowed the traffic, but it wasn't many, there was hardly any, wasn't many entrances on and off. There was a few street crossings, but hardly anything else. I think if we asked the businesses, I think the majority would say, leave it like it is. Bottom line, I think it's a step backwards.
This is not going to cost the town anything.
No, sir. If, should we choose to stripe it one way and choose to restripe it another in the future, it would be the cost of the towns, should we change it after DOT does either, either method?
Again, I'm not going to be argumentative. I'm probably going to agree with the assessment that says, let's keep it a, a four-lane road. Again, reading, it's interesting to read this information from the report. Referring to Avisboro Road, it says this road is currently four-lane, undivided and carries less than 7,500 vehicles per day, having no median or center turn lane makes this road potentially dangerous. Also, with low traffic volumes, Avisboro Road can easily be served with two lanes. The road diet would maintain two through lanes, including streetscape elements, bike lanes and sidewalks and a middle lane. Avisboro Road could become Garner's signature complete street. Again, maybe that's a sky in the pie, pie in the sky language there. Differing views on that, I think there would be some possibilities if you changed it, but I'm sure I would be outvoted and I'm not convinced fully that it's not better to leave it as four-lanched.
I want to comment, John said if it was built today, it would be built to these standards, which is probably true. But, if it was built today and they have the park apartments and those multifamily came in, we'd make it be a right turn lane. And there'd be a right turn lane to the school, and there'd be a right turn lane into Georgetown Manor, there's 100-plus units, you would have right turn lanes. And so, we're dealing with a road that was developed, a lot of it was developed many years ago, and it's kind of hard to fit it into the, I'm looking, kind of the round peg, the square peg in the round hole. But, again, their standards, yes, that's what they would do today, but we would also change things, as evidenced by the turn lane we put in here. You put internal lanes in most of those businesses. So, it's kind of hard, you're not really comparing apples nor this.
I think by the time this, there's a need to restripe it, I think that there'll be a lot younger voices voting on here, and then it's time will come when there's an overall plan about if there's, if there's enough support for bike lanes and a thorough evaluation of that. But, right now, I'm willing to leave it.
I think that's what I'm hearing. No change is a good change, right, Mayor?
I'll say it works like it is, and I think the most important thing is getting it resurfaced.
All right, we'll pass that on to DOT, thank you.
Good next is the 2018 Condition Assessment, Jonathan Ham.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is the 2018 pavement condition assessment award to the Kersher Group. As directed previously, staff developed requests for qualifications, and we received six proposals of the six. The Kersher Group scored the highest of those six, so we began negotiations with them. They, they put together a scope for a pavement condition assessment, and, and the proposed fee for their work, which you'll see in the attached scope, was $81,880. The Kersher Group has worked with numerous municipalities across the state and multiple states on similar projects with success. And with this in mind, staff recommends approval or award of the pavement condition assessment to the Kersher Group. Engineering department and public works staff are here for any questions you might have on this item.
One, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, one clarification on the information you have on the cover sheet. It says funding source of street and sidewalk bonds. The actual source for this would be Powell Bill funds. So, just want to make that correction before you start your discussion.
Have this company that was performing the work here gone? I don't remember, to hell.
They have not, I don't believe, they have as a sub to them, SEPI, which has done quite a bit of work here in the area. But, no, the, the actual company is, they're based elsewhere, they have an office in Raleigh, and that will be who does the work.
Is this type of work something that I T R E, ITRI used to do for a nominal sum, say $2,500?
Yeah.
I'm kind of dinking myself, I realize that. Wonder why it takes two supporting sub consultants to do this work?
I believe that SEPI is doing most of the, the ride around, they're basically the field personnel, and then Kersher takes the, their field data and compiles it.
And then there's a Grantham in there, who, what do they do? Another consultant. Grantham GIS sub consultant will then be imported to Esri ArcPad application.
Yeah, that, that will make it to where we can actually pull up the data and show it graphically, which is something that we haven't done with previous pavement condition assessments.
So, we won't be coordinating these three folks, Kersher will be doing that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
There's another actor in here named Agile Assets that is, seems to be a software operation, and, and I think it's stated plainly in here that we will need to contract with Agile Assets to purchase the licensing rights. And, but I see later on in the proposal that they've also got, consultant has got a couple line items for Agile Assets. Can you, can you decipher that for us?
Sure, absolutely. Agile Assets is the proprietary software that Kersher Group uses for the pavement condition assessment, for the, the budgetary tool that will come out of this, that'll show if you use A, B, C, and D of their, of the types of pavement remediation and pavement management tools, whether it be resurfacing, patching, crack quarry, crack sealing, those types of things. The, the software kind of breaks out where those recommended practices would work better and, and how the program will operate over a five-year period, which was what we asked them for in RFQ. As far as the, the software itself, the, the purchase of it is a pass-through, we would pay Kersher Group, and they would basically pass that through to Agile Assets, but the town would hold the license. Does that...
Well, I, I think what it is, is it's another way to keep their fee down, and, but I still pay the price, but it's, we arrive at the same, arrive at the same destination. There was, there was a couple of words in there, unless otherwise instructed, maintenance activities may be used to include, a couple of words that I had not heard before, rejuvenators. Look on page, page nine of their proposal under section G. I'd, I'd never heard that in pavement design or reconstruction. I've heard of overlaying, crack sealing, full-depth patching, and a little bit on preservation. I, I was, I suspect the thing that got me is that we got a, we got a high-profile firm with two sub consultants and a pass-through, and still, you know, I'm, I'm just expressing frustration and not understanding what, I've been out of it for a while, so I don't doubt of what they'll do a good job. I'm, I'm thinking they're, they're probably doing some things that if they'd give us the data, we'd make our own, draw our own conclusions, but I'm not going, I'm not going to argue against them, I'm just pointing out some of the oddities that I saw, but I'm, I'll, when it comes down to vote on this thing, I'll support it.
Any other questions?
But, this is approved tonight, Jonathan, how soon will they be able to start, contract signed?
I think as soon as we get the contract routed, they can go ahead and start. Typically, we give them a notice to proceed, so if it's approved tonight, then we can go through and, and get it routed and signed in the next week or two, and then get them going. Sometimes they decide to work at risk, but that's their call, not ours. So, I don't know how fast they would start, ideally.
And to get the information, there was something that I thought I read, now I've seen so many numbers, I'm sure I confused something about, it would take 60 days to do the work, if I, if I see that right.
That's, I believe so, yes.
So, we get that, so when, when would the town get the information back? I know that's six days to do the work, and you still got to get, get the data together.
Sure, it probably would be close to the end of the year, which would feed into our bidding for the next year's resurfacing.
This includes follow-up surveys for three years as an option, that's included in the 81,000 price?
That is correct.
Do you see any need to, to sign on for the first part and see how they perform and then decide whether to extend it, or do you, are you comfortable in that?
That is fully optional. The, the understanding that I got from Kersher Group was that we could approve task one and then up to a year after the original approval, we could come back and approve task two.
Same price?
Yes. That was my understanding.
Have y'all discussed that internally, and you have a strong opinion about that?
It says right here under fee and method payment, since fee is based upon assessments within 90 days, reserve rights for 90 days, adjust the cost of these services. So, when we take part of it, the services according to what it says there can be adjusted, could be adjusted.
It could be, but the, the understanding that I had from them was that the price would not change for that first year.
Well, I think it's probably another lit way out of that too, is that even if you signed up the whole thing right now and you got, after the first year and you decide, no, we don't need this, do this, or whatever, you can always terminate it. But, had y'all had any discussions about whether to go for the whole, whole package or to stage it, phase it?
We've talked about it, councilman, and not having experience with this software. We've talked about the possibility, and as far as I've often asked that correct question, would it be an option? We think that the package has value to it. Again, it will depend on if we elect to do some of the options that they present us with, but it does give us an ability to kind of look at our pavement maintenance practices, pick and choose from, from the assorted ones, and then see what it does to our roadways. So, it, it is a financial tool that helps us look at the roadways. One thing that's in the verb, or in the proposal too, that talks about is something that we've not engaged council with because it is an arbitrary number, but some communities will, will engage and say, we want all of our streets to be at a 70 or greater, or, you know, another, 70 is about a break point, you know, when a street's starting to say maintenance or need maintenance. So, there's some things where it allows a community to set a, a bar and say, that's where we're trying to go. And I think there's value in that tool for that. Again, with not having experience with it, I can't speak strongly to it, but I do think that as a group, we felt that there was value in it.
Let me make a... I have a question about item H on page, page nine of their report. It says Agile Assets, pavement analysis software will be used to perform the optimization analysis, so forth and so on. It says, for this proposal, the town will not have direct access to use the software, the annual subscription fee of $53.50 for the first years included in Kersher's fee. Is that, that, that's kind of a standard part of what a consultant would do, doesn't give us heartburn that, that the town doesn't have direct access to the software, is that right?
Yeah, we, we, they'll actually be the ones that set up the software, run it for the first year, and they're the ones that are going to set up our, our pavement condition assessment and give us those parameters on where we're going to go after the first year, and they'll give us that five-year plan at the first year, and then the, the additional years of setup are based on what we actually perform, what we do, then they'll adjust it and we'll see how it's performing, how we're performing with it. But, that, as far as having access, direct access to the software, we will have our data once we're, we're done with the, the condition assessment. That's, that's part of what they're going to give to us is the actual data.
Okay. So, if you're satisfied with that, I don't have a concern.
I would say we really wouldn't have the time to really learn that software in and out, so we're best, we're better off to let someone that deals with it on a daily basis manipulate it.
Were you going to say something, John?
I was just going to say that one of the, part of the discussion that we had too is that from a, from a management team standpoint, because we are going to escalate the amount of resurfacing that we're committing to doing pretty dramatically in a very short period of time, we believe that the additional cost to have someone on call for three years is, if you consider it in proportion to the amount of money we're about to spend on paving, we believe that it's probably a, a good investment because I believe we are going to, with, with the direction that the software and the company can give us on some alternative methods, we wouldn't want to put ourselves in a position of having a, a report that would be good. It's a five-year plan, but we're going to escalate what we're doing, so we may wish after year two, we had a different set of analysis. So, I think one, one reason that the team felt like it was worth the investment is that we're recognizing the council's given us direction to ramp up spending on resurfacing.
And if I may add, we have engineering and public works here because we've been talking for a while about having a holistic approach to road resurfacing. We do some patching in public works, but then yet, engineering is in charge of the resurfacing program, so we're trying to figure out... so we're trying to figure out how the patching that's done in public works can help delay, hopefully, some of the road resurfacing. So we think this takes a holistic approach to just being more efficient with the funds we have and prolonging the road structures for a longer period of time.
Okay. I move that we approve staff's recommendation for the 2018 pavement condition assessment and that it be awarded to the Cursor Group in the amount of 81,880. Further move that after this study is completed, but before we authorize the next step, is that staff come back and speak to us about how it went. Do you wanna make any changes? Do you wanna do any reevaluation, or do you wanna terminate? But let's have a conversation before it's automatically renewed.
Can, can we clarify, just to make sure, understand that, that the coming back is after the, the initial-
Oh, yeah.
-three-year period and not, not dividing? Okay, just-
Yeah, it's, it's, put the whole thing in there, but come back and evaluate that first year because this is a, so we can make, we keep it so we can just, if you need to make some changes, redirection or some tweaks to it, we can.
Yeah, we got a motion. Then we get a second.
I'll second it, but I, I have a discussion, but I think the whole idea, we're, we're taking a, a much more aggressive and different approach during resurfacing because we're way woefully behind. And again, this 80,000, John mentioned, I think this year, we had 400,000 in the budget. The estimate to do the work was 438 or 439 or something, and the cost came in at 693, and then we had to spend extra money. So we're, we're over 700,000 this year and we still didn't finish the streets we wanted to. And if, if you just did that in three years, this is just, I mean, that's just 10%. This is, we'll just write it 10% of that for one year. This is, as John said, I dropped the bucket, but it's, if we're gonna spend a million plus dollars a year resurfacing, this is in three-year period, a, I think money well worth it. And it will take some of the pressure off, off staff. They can work together, public works and engineer work together with the consultants. And note, what is great, Tony mentioned 70 or 65 or 75, or whatever the number may be, 110, I don't know. But I, I think it's money well spent that we're finally addressing something that has got to be addressed that we put off for so long. And I'm, I think, thanks, I think, I hope the council will support it and we can move forward with it because it's gotta be done. We've gotta get some of these streets repaired and resurfaced.
While, while we're in discussion, just one clarification, I guess, and you may not know the answer to this, but we already have some kind of a priority out there. I've seen it at some point in time, which says this street should be surfaced before this one, et cetera. My question is, hiring this firm, I mean, is, is, is whatever priority we have now, is that likely to change in terms of the sequence in which we resurface streets?
Yes, sir. The, the sequence will change based on the new pavement condition ratings. One thing that we have asked Cursor Group is to take the existing streets that we did not get to this year, and those will be the priority for the next cycle, for that year one of the five-year plan. So we will have a bit of carryover from the 2014 pavement condition assessment into this new plan. So we'll take care of the streets that we did not get to this year first, and then we will go into the new, into the new rating.
Okay. That's helpful enough. Okay, just a motion, second. I don't think we've got a second.
Aye.
Hold both. Jonathan, you're still up, son?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and members of council, the item that I have before you is the Timber Drive Sidewalk Connectors Contract Award for Design. As, as you may remember, this is the, filling in the holes of the, the Timber Drive Sidewalk on the south side of Timber Drive, the, the two holes that we've identified are between Blanton and Stowe and between Hearth Drive and the post office. And so the, with these two sections complete, you should be able to walk from the South corner Greenway all the way to, basically all the way to White Oak on the same side of Timber without having to cross. The project was sent forward for lap funding, and we received that lap funding. It's an 80/20 match, so the town will put forward 20% of the, the budgeted amount, and then the federal government through the state and Campo will provide the other 80%. So the DOT has already looked at these contract, or this contract with SEPI, and we went through quite a, a long review process with them to get to this point. We had, we sent out the RFQ for firms to do this work. We received two submittals, one from SEPI Engineering, one from Ramey Kemp. After discussions with DOT, they recommended we go ahead and make a decision between those two firms. And so after that discussion, we, we found that SEPI was to be the, the most qualified firm. And so they've worked with the town and they've worked with DOT on, on several lap projects in the past, and we feel that that experience is gonna be valuable going through this project. Staff met with SEPI and we negotiated with them to get the scope for the project design to 68,107.07. With their previous work with the town, with their previous work on these lap projects, staff recommends award, and I'm available for any questions.
I had raised a couple of questions with Jonathan, but let me just, and I'm, I have no problem awarding or recommending award on this one either, but look on page 51 on our agenda package. This is a, how would you describe this project? It's, it's pretty straightforward sidewalk project. We have the right of way, don't we?
The, the right of way exists. Obviously, curb and gutter is not an issue because there's curb and gutter along the entire link. The, it was graded, most of it was graded for, with that graded side, shoulder for sidewalk in the future, and the driveways were put in by our standard, which includes that five-foot strip that would be where the sidewalk would tie to driveways.
This, this is a state-maintained road, and we're using lap funding. Is some of that, is that essentially, does some, it, it, its origin, did it come from the federal, does lap funding come from the federal government?
80% does.
On Kentucky. Well, then look on page 51. Remember, sidewalk project. We, they're gonna have to conduct a review of available data from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Where'd it go?
Not us, not our requirements, not SEPI's requirements. The next one, they'll submit a request to the state Historic Preservation Office. Chapeau for preliminary review and determination of the likelihood of the project to impact cultural resources. Further down, environmental permitting for streams, I could see wetlands, buffers, state water quality. This is our taxpayer dollars at work. Jonathan, what was the estimated cost of this project?
The estimated cost that we put in was 408,000. That's what we got approved for from the state.
And our portion is?
Our portion is about, I think it's 80, roughly 80.
Okay. Do we, do you see any need to extend a storm drainpipe under the loop spot?
Not with the, the existing grading that's out there. We will be crossing the floodplain, floodway at the, the crossing for, I, I think that's Bagwell Branch. But we're, with it existing, already being graded out there, we should be able to bring the sidewalk up closer to the curb and gutter and eliminate any need for no rise or any type of, we'll, we'll still have to look at it for that, but we should be able to comply with those regs.
And I'm assuming that over the years, we haven't noticed anything that would bring us to the point of, we need to reevaluate the size of that pipe and go through all the drainage calculations. There's nothing there pushing that agenda. Pretty straightforward, federal, essentially a federal project, go through, by the rules. Move to approve.
Motion made in the second half in favor of vote by Senator.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no committee reports. Is that right? Mr. Manager?
While he's here, I'm gonna take the liberty of asking Mr. Forrest Jones to come forward and talk about the cleanup schedule as it relates to the, the storm and the actual normal cleanup we have and how we're gonna, you know, make some alterations to that schedule.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Thank you. Yes, we wrote, did an assessment around town. We feel that there is some, certainly we have been impacted some by Hurricane Florence, not nearly as much as others. So we are very fortunate and blessed for that. We talked with staff and management and felt that waiting until our fall cleanup just would not be a good time. When you think about where we are in relation to our unprepared scheduled fall cleanup, that happens at the end of October. So essentially, for the folks who would be served the last week of that, debris could be sitting out on our roadways for up to 10 weeks. So we felt like waiting that long just was not a good move for us. No one wants to look at that debris. So we decided to bring that back, look at the schedule, and we're proposing, if you've seen today, starting on October 8th, we will begin a cleanup of town, and we will treat it like we would a, a storm cleanup, pretty much, which is we will not follow a specific schedule. We'll be asking all residents to put their debris out on the curb, their yard waste debris out on the curb. By September, by October the 8th, we will begin working, and we will work continuously until we have that debris collected. We anticipate that will take us a couple of weeks to do that in keeping with our, I think at least two weeks to get that work done, and certainly if it takes us longer, we'll stay with it until we're through. And then we would not be doing our fall cleanup at the end of October as previously scheduled. Basically, if we did that, we would have our staff doing cleanup for basically a period of six weeks when we really have a lot of other things that we could and should be doing as well. So that's kind of our plan of attack on storm cleanup.
Good job.
Any questions?
I, I think this is one of the most proactive activities that the town could be doing now, and I mentioned something to Rodney earlier and says, well, we've, we've done this before. Maybe we have, but this is, this is a service to the citizens and it's, it's timely, it's a quick response. We appreciate all of your collective thinking to, to be proactive, because it's, I'll, I'll give you an example, this, this Saturday, there's a, there's a big service project covering a number of areas at, at our church that, one of which is helping folks with yard cleanup. And it, it'd be a good thing to be able to say, get your stuff to the, to the curb, because in 10 days, it'll be gone. And while you're there, I, I would also, I'll, I'll complete my report because it, both of, most of the items were directed to Jews that, where at Public Works. Had a, had a, an unwarranted visitor on our premises the other day that required a personal attack to kill that little rascal. And then, now that I've got him killed, what do I do with him? And so I put him in a bag, and I said, well, that bag's not smell-proof, so I said, where in the world can I dispose of this thing? So I called Public Works, and I said, where's the place that I can dispose that? And they said, well, if you'll put it out at the curb, we'll pick it up. I said, you will? They said, yes. So I made the deposit on the curb, and I tell you, I, I believe they'd already picked it up by the time I got back to the house. But anyhow, I, I appreciate that. I, I called looking to find out the place to drop it off truly. And I was pleasantly surprised, and the service was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kennedy, would you mind sharing with us what kind of creature that was so that we know who to call if one shows up in our yard?
I, I don't respond to reptiles well. I, I get vicious or bad around them.
All right. Thank you.
All right. I'll continue on with manager reports. I'm gonna do three standard reports. Got our info separately in front of you, as well as the finance report, and also building and permit report inside, showing some of the growth we have. We also are gonna respond to a couple of concerns that the council's had in past meetings. One was the New Rand Road House that had burned, and it's been sitting there for a while, and then also the lighting at North-South Station. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Hodges to give you an update on those and where we are with those.
Yes, sir. At a previous meeting, Mr. Marshburn asked about a house on New Rand Road. Staff has given Mr. Marshburn a direct response back, but I wanted to share that with everyone. Staff have been working with the owner of that property for a potential development project. The development project went stagnant, and so they have now, working with them at, when you were, after you inquired about that, to, first of all, try to get some overgrown grass and weeds and so forth trimmed up, which they were hoping to do immediately after the storm. But then the agent for the property has also said that if they are not able to finalize the transaction for that property soon, they would seek pricing for demolition and consider starting the demolition process. So we will keep you posted as we see activity happening with that house. Secondly, Ms. Behringer had asked about the, the lighting at North-South Station, had mentioned that the lighting, particularly at South Station, seemed dark. Planning staff went out and did an evaluation of that lighting prior to calling the owner of the property or the, or the management company. I'm not, I think it was probably the management company. What they actually found is that before even needing to address a count of lighting, they observed a large number of lights not working or being out. And so they've made contact with the, the management group, and the management group has turned in work orders with whomever they used to do that, to have those lights put back in service. And then staff will go back out and take a look once those repairs have been done to see if there's still a deficiency. But we believe that most of the concerns that, that you may have been observing were probably from malfunctioning fixtures rather than a shortage of fixtures.
It looked like about 30, at least 30% of the lights just were not working. Did they give you a timeframe?
I don't have their response in front of me. I, I remember that staff thought that they were, they were getting on it quickly, but I don't have a specific timeframe. If I could, if I can find a specific timeframe, I'll let you know.
All right, gentlemen. Turn it over to Mr. Roy Lance to give you an update on the South corner Greenway.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one schedule note. You may recall, after the work session at the following meeting, I talked about the fact that in light of the cost being somewhat higher, we were gonna pursue lap funding, which was, appeared to be a viable option, but that might cause us to change a little bit some of the, the process or switch around the order of some things. The, the deadline for the lap funding is October 31st, and while we believe that they will allow us to move forward with multiple route options, which is, you know, as it stands right now, until we get some community feedback and bring it back to you, there's still three alternatives under consideration. While we think we can move forward with that, it would be cleaner and easier if we had settled on one that we were gonna move forward with, in, in part because we're required to submit or to provide a match of at least 20%, and more gets us greater points and so on. And given that the price of the options is significantly different, you know, our approach to how we will provide the match would, you know, potentially would change if we knew which, which alternative we were gonna go with. And so in order to try to improve our ability to put in a good application, we're gonna go ahead with the community meeting a little bit sooner than we would have otherwise. And this is in the same, that was one of our next steps to do on the project anyway, but we're just gonna move it up a little bit sooner so that we can have the community meeting. Right now, we're looking at October 11th, Thursday, the 11th of October. That would allow us to get some feedback from the community and come back and share the results of that with you all, and you could give us some direction on which route to proceed with at your October 16th meeting. So we will notify you all, as well as the, the public and the property owners in the area, once we settle on that date for certain, but just wanted to give you a heads up on that and make sure that that was acceptable.
Sounds like a good approach.
Very much so.
All right.
Thank you.
Last thing I had was just a reminder that the, myself and the, the assistant town managers, we will be on our annual professional development training at the International City County Managers Association. So we will be out of town next week when we would normally have a work session. In, in the past, the council has been gracious to move that work session to the Thursday following our return, which will be September 27. So the work session will be on September 27 at normal time, 7 o'clock. So we appreciate that.
Work sessions are at 6:00.
Oh, 6:00, I'm sorry. You're right. 6:00. Yep.
May I have?
And that's it?
Mr. Attorney, you have anything?
I do not have anything to report.
Okay, let's start with the council, Ken Marshburn. Okay, let's start with the council again, Marshburn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're thanking people, I'd just like to thank any and all of the town departments who assisted during the storm. I know there were operations centers set up and we were fortunate to dodge some of the real problems that are, that are occurring in other areas of the town. I noted with some pride that certainly our local high school, or one of our local high schools, the Garner Magnet High School was used as an evacuation center. If you've never been to one of those, I encourage, I had not until this time. It's pretty amazing to watch how they, they're a very organized group. And I know we had any number of volunteers from our town who were there and participated there to be commended. Certainly, our police department was visible there. And I could understand more fully why when I was walking out of the building. I guess when you get that many people together, folks are subject, get a little cross-wired at times. But there was a, an individual who was highly emotional and upset and mad. And at any rate, they were, they were there to lend support. I don't think they had to actually intervene, but it was nice to know that, that they were around, sure enough. And also, as I said, I saw any number of our town people who were there volunteering. On a different subject, I am, as an individual and as a council member, sympathetic to the plight of those in our community who might be labeled as homeless. And I'm not sure exactly what the definition of it is. But at any rate, I have noted that there are, there's a gentleman who seems to be using our Lake Benson Park area as a place where he stays some, I'm not sure. But I noted the other day, when all the rain was occurring, he was walking up to the park there. I have seen him on more than one occasion at the gazebo there in the morning time. I'm assuming he sleeps there, I'm not sure. But he, he made his way into the park that evening during all the rain. And the day afterwards, as I was in the park, I saw him, he appeared to be sleeping there on the park bench. I was going to call Grace Church there to be commended because I know they have a program that assists homeless. I don't know who this gentleman is. I wish and hope that we could both find out who he is and see if there's some things we can, we can do to assist. But I'm not sure having him sort of hang out at our gazebo in the park is the best place for him. I don't know if anybody else has observed that. But I'll, I'll just note that for the record. And if anybody has any suggestions as to how we might go about assisting him or maybe seeing if there's a better place for him to stay, I think that would be a good idea. Just a couple of other things. The North Carolina League of Municipalities, as most of you may know, did postpone their conference that was scheduled to be held this week. Ms. Behringer and I had planned to attend. And so that has been delayed. And I would just mention that a few of us had a chance to attend the ribbon cutting out at the New South Garner High School. That was a nice festive occasion, gave us a chance to, to see some of our county officials out there. And I think the theme of the day was tighten up, right? So that was very nice. I think with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yes, sir. In reference to Mr. Marshburn's question about the homeless people and services they need, I believe I'm correct. And Mr. Marshburn is saying if you can contact Anne Marie Mariana in Wake County, that she can direct you to where he can be taken or helped. I know that a couple of years ago, they were working on a project to get a location that these folks could be taken to where all of the services that they are eligible for, they could be directed in the right direction by going to one place. So she would, it's Anne Marie Mariana in Wake County.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. I would be very happy to report that there is no flooding on Garner Road west of the Van Dore Springs Road intersection. The North Carolina Railroad and DOT came out and solved the problem, put new pipes in. And although it was bad to be out in the storm, it was very nice to come down Garner Road and see that there was no hazard there as far as people encountering water that they were expecting. It's a fantastic job that they've done. And I understand that Forrest had a lot to do with getting the right people to play at the right time, so thank you. And I talked to the manager week before last about the railroad work that's being done at intersections, crosswalk, crosswalk sections at New Rand Road and St. Mary's Street. And the railroad had come and started working on putting new rails down. But they left the, the condition of the pavement between the existing pavement and the track a mess and you couldn't ride across it without bumping and being afraid of blowing a tire. They've been out there now for two days. I'm sad to say they left it for nearly two weeks like that with no warning that you were going to be encountering some problems. But they've been out there for two days now working on it and hopefully it won't be much longer before it'll be a smooth trip across that again. That's all, sir.
Okay.
Same thing at?
St. Mary's Street?
At New Rand.
Yeah.
Ray?
Mayor, appreciate the staff working on the schedule for the fall pickup, train pickup for the, for the type of folks. And they'll start cleaning up when they can and get the stuff out to the street. I want to say that since we talked about street research tonight, I saw firsthand last week during our asphalt, as they were doing a research on the street. And they were trying to, and I know, get finished before the storm came, but they did it. What I saw, the work I saw them do was fast, quick, neat, clean. Saw Jonathan out there also, thought did a good job. So I just wanted to say I thought they did good work, and they've done work here at the town before and it seemed to do pretty good work. So I'll give them a thumbs up for the work that they did. And last, after Mr. Kennedy talked about his visitor in his home. And after his comments tonight in the, in the scope of services here about contacting the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, I hope now after your comments, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service doesn't contact you.
Come right on. I'll let you, let them stand watch so that it'll be protected the next time. That's all. One of the things that came out in the news surrounding the preparation for Florence was staging area at North Station. And they mentioned that they were using some of the facilities, the Sears Distribution Center, Sears something. Well, I thought it was Kmart and I thought it was really Baker Roofing that was doing it. Because Baker Roofing now owns that site and they own all the parking area where all the staging was occurring. So I, am I wrong?
They worked out an agreement with Baker. It's a privately owned facility, so I think they had some discussion about it. They didn't just commandeer it.
No, no, no. What I, what I wanted to do is to make sure that Baker got the appropriate recognition for cooperating and for its use as a staging area. Rodney, could you give us a thumbnail sketch about the emergency operations center and where it was set up? And how it was, just a, just a little bit of highlights of that? Because I think the people would be, citizens would be interested in knowing what we were doing.
Yes, so what we did this year, having, I guess, newer facilities and having space to do it, is we set up an emergency operations center at the police department. And basically, we had representation from public safety, which would include police and fire, and then also Public Works. And we had staff from admin, me and the assistant town managers would rotate in from time to time. And we would look at the briefings and participate in the, the Wake County EOC briefings and the National Weather Service briefings. And we would just basically monitor the conditions in Garner. And we had a hotline phone set up for calls to come in. And it was just a way for us to respond and be able to make decisions in real time by having all the players there and keeping folks on call throughout the event and not just, you know, just coming in. They were actually on-site in Garner. And as you can imagine, we, we called in extra staff in Public Works and police. And so it was just a way to kind of direct our resources and make the biggest impact we could and respond to any type of emergency. Fortunately, there were some, but, but not as many as what other areas are experiencing. But it worked out really well. We had the computers and the database and the, all the different weather service reports, you know, on the screens. And we could kind of track what was going on in Garner and what we could expect coming to Garner as far as wind speed and rain, rain volume. So it worked out really well.
I'd also mention.
Oh, excuse me. We also had communication, so not to leave Rick out. We had communication because that was important because as decisions were being made, Rick was and staff, communication staff were able to put that out on our social media, our website and then make contact and reports that we were putting out to the public and the news media. We wanted to all have a consistent message, so communications helped with that.
Yes, your communications were very effective. It didn't interrupt programming on the TV and upstaged that with the red band going across the top and then going duck sound. But yes, it was, your messages were timely and well, well done. I was talking to Jason Waters yesterday. Jason, most of you will know, was with the Downtown Garner Association. But Jason also worked for Raleigh Utilities. And they had a couple of different emergency operations centers. One was here at the Dempsey Benton Plant. And I was just talking in generalities about him and asking him had there been any flooding on, across Old Stage Road in between the two lakes. And he says, well, he says, in anticipation of the storm, they had already drawn down Lake Wheeler so that Lake Wheeler could store and, and they just avoided the flooding on Old Stage Road, which was, made a lot of sense. But it was, it was just amazing that all the things that were going on behind the scenes that we didn't even, wouldn't necessarily think about until somebody tells us about it. So it's unfortunate to happen and I think from what you all said, that you learn from the experience and hope we don't have to put it to use again anytime soon. But glad there were some lessons learned, lessons learned. Thank you all, all that.
Motion to adjourn.
Just on a very light and positive note, Mr. Kennedy and I are members of a morning rotary club. We have the privilege of being a part of a Orscher Fest that is a fundraiser that's taking place on October the eighteenth. I would try to preempt him, if you want to buy tickets, see me. They're thirty dollars a piece, same as last year, the Band of Oz will be playing. It's a great event and I'm sure either one of us could furnish you with tickets if, if you're interested. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, yes.
Second.
My favor vote, myself. I oppose.
John, where's that community meeting that'll be held on the eleventh?